Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Pardon our technical delays. We lost the Zoom connection for a minute, but we're back on that. I may have some people zooming in, so I don't know for sure. I'll double check in a minute. Good evening and welcome to the September meeting of the Town of Milton Planning Board. Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the attendance for the board?
Mr. Marschiano?
Here. Can I see what it is? Yes.
Ms. Vandesa?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Ms. Pedula?
Here.
Chairman Barto?
Present.
Do we have the building?
No. I'm going to make a note of that. I'd also note that in our attendance is our engineer, Joel Bianchi, Bill Lewis, the Director of Planning and Code, and Deputy Clerk Amanda Zawada. That's our attendance. So we'll begin the evening with a pledge to the flag. A pledge to the flag of the United States of America, a new republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And now I'll turn to chairman announcements. This is the first time that we as a board have been able to gather together since March, and I want to thank the planning staff, the town clerk, Brenda Howe, and her assistant, Amanda Zawada, for helping get this somewhat back to normal meeting together. We do have limited public engagement here at the meeting, and we'll continue to Zoom and have our dial-in options for the public as necessary, so please bear with us as we adapt to some new technology and procedures. We'll have an opportunity for the public to interface with us this evening in a general public comment session, so if you're Zooming, you want to make a comment, please use the hand wave feature and alert us as to your interest in commenting. You may also use the Q&amp;A feature and submit a question. However, we won't accept anonymous questions. We'd like to have your name with your submission on that. If you've dialed in on the phone feature of the Zoom, we'd like to, if you'd like to make a comment, please text Bill Lewis at 518-376-1831 and provide him your name and interest in making a comment. Again, that number is 518-376-1831. As with our usual comment protocol, request that you announce yourself, state your address, and present your comments in three minutes or less. For the board, you also received a copy of the State Superfund Notice for Rickett Strike Cleaning. Tina sent that around. It was sent to us as an FYI from the Department of Environmental Conservation. I don't see any time that we'll really engage in that project as a planning board. It's frankly the whole project sites in the Village of Austin's fine. Future use would be their decision, but we may get periodic information just because theoretically it's also in the Town of Milton. Then on Saturday, September 12, the planning board, the zoning board, did have a tour of the Active Solar Site on Sodeman Road. We met with the project applicant, walked the site, asked some technical questions, and just kind of general questions about the project there at all. There was not a forum of either board present, and we did not deliberate any project elements. I'd like to thank the property owner and Frank McLennigan for hosting the tour and getting us out there. So we appreciate that. It was a beautiful day in a former junkyard. I'd also had a meeting this morning with Supervisors Lotnick, Code Enforcement Officer Lewis regarding the potential planned development district on Stone Church Road. The Highway Superintendent and Deputy Highway Superintendent were there as well. If you recall, this proposal got pitched by us back in February. The project really hasn't changed much. It's still a pretty high density. We gave them some general concerns and comments. We'll see if they come back. The next step for them, if they wanted to submit, would be to formally go to the town for a planned development district of the law, and then the town board would likely refer that to us for a recommendation, and then we'd start that process. I'll keep you posted as that moves. And that concludes my comments. Does anybody from the board have anything they want to share at this time? Okay. So our first business item is approval of the minutes from the August 19, 2020 meeting. You all should have gotten a copy of those minutes. I think Tina sent out a couple revisions again to them, which is fine. I think you guys are obviously giving her some feedback as they've drafted, but a final draft was sent to you, and at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the August 19, 2020 planning board minutes. Use the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the planning board minutes of August 19, 2020 as provided to the board.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, changes, comments? Okay, Tina, go ahead and call the board.
Mr. Marschiano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes. Okay. At this point, we will open the meeting to comments from the public. Again, I'd ask if you're Zooming with us and want to make a comment, use the hand wave feature or submit a Q&amp;A with your name and interest in commenting, and if you dial in, text at 518-376-1831. We have five participants, but they all seem to be us. It's all us. So anybody have a comment they'd like to make? If not, we will close the public comment period. That brings us to our one business item this evening. We have another community solar project before us from Active Solar. I note the applicant is also before the zoning board of appeals for an area variance. The zoning board of appeals started their review of that variance on August 29. We also have had several discussions regarding the environmental review of the project. After consultation with our engineer and council, we've decided that the planning board will take the lead agency status on this action. In addition, on our review of the environmental assessment form, we find that this project is a type-one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So we'll start out with a motion, entertain a motion to declare this site plan and special use permit as type-one action pursuant to seeker.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have the action of the solar project on Sodeman Road as a type-one action and declare the Town of Milton Planning Board as lead agency to coordinate with other agencies.
Then I need a second.
Chairman, I'll second.
I think we'll come back and deal with the...
Lead agency.
Lead agency in a second motion.
All right, we'll do that in one request.
So we'll come back. So it's just for our kind of amendment to remove the lead agency status at this time. This is second. Any discussion at this point? If not, go ahead and call the board.
Mr. Marschiano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes. Okay. Now, as a type-one action, we're required to conduct a coordinated review and notify all involved agencies of our role in the action and willingness to be the lead agency. At a minimum, at this point, I see the Milton's Zone Board of Appeals as the only potentially other one of our local agencies here. Do you see what? Okay, and possibly Officer Park Recreation and Historic Preservation. But what I'd like to do is have a motion to direct our engineer to contact all the potentially involved agencies and express the willingness of the Town of Milton Planning Board to serve as the lead agency pursuant to seeker.
Mr. Chairman, I move a motion that we direct our town engineer to contact all potentially involved parties and agencies and express the willingness of the Town of Milton Planning Board to serve as lead agency pursuant to sickr.
Can I have a second?
I second that, Chairman.
Mr. Collins? Any discussion? Questions? Okay. Call the board, Tina.
Mr. Marschiano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes. Okay. So for our conceptual review this evening, we all should have before us a special use permit application and a site plan review application, a full environmental assessment form part one that was submitted yesterday by the applicant, a site plan dated September 2nd, 2020, a stormwater pollution plan dated September 2020, and an email dated 9/4/20 from County Planner Jeffrey Williams regarding no need for county referral. Mr. Bianchi, do you have anything you'd like us to consider at this point?
No, at this point, we have no comments. The only thing that we did sort of to get the application queued up or seeker was we identified or advised active of the fact that this was a type-one action and to submit that long form, full environmental assessment form, so that once the seeker process was nailed down that this board was prepared to act this evening to move that process forward, which they have done. So we will have our comment letter generated well in advance of the next board meeting, and we will start the circulation of lead agency requests tomorrow.
And that's 30 days?
30 days. So I was checking. Today is the 16th, so no sooner than October 16th could you assume lead agency status and/or act upon seeking. Right, so we will have it done. You will be in a position to take seeker action if your soul climbed at your next meeting.
Okay. Bill Lewis, do you have anything you want to?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, Frank McLennigan? How do we do with that?
You got a perfect.
Perfect, all right. If you want to present the project, whoever you want to have present the project for us, step up to the podium and start that.
Where would you like us?
At the podium. Since there's nobody Zooming, I don't think we have to worry about getting anything out over the Zoom. So let's pull some.
Will Ryan take it? I'll fill in where needed.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ryan Farnum with Creative Engineering Engineering, and on behalf of Active Solar Development, we are presenting the Sodeman Road Solar Farm for special use permit and site plan review. With me tonight is Frank McLennan with Active Solar, and we'll be able to answer any questions when we thank you for your consideration of our application. The Sodeman Road Solar Farm is proposed to be located at 434 Sodeman Road, just north of the intersection of Murray Road and New York 29, in the primarily open lands behind the recycling facility that's owned by AMC Realty of Saratoga. The parcel is located on R2 zoning district and is 46.97 acres in size. The solar farm will consist of ground-mounted solar panels and will generate approximately 6.7 megawatts of electricity. The site will contain the panels, equipment pads, and gravel access road, and will be enclosed completely with a chain link fence. That total enclosed area is approximately 23.1 acres. In accordance with the Town Code for Solar Farms, this proposed solar farm will meet the requirements for the zoning district with special use permit, the minimum property size, and the 100-foot equipment setback. However, the proposed project is seeking relief from the Town Zoning Board of Appeals for the requirement that the solar equipment cover no more than 10% of the property. The surrounding neighbors of the property generally consist of open land, forested areas, commercial, and rural residential homes. However, as a result of the orientation of the elongated parcel, the surrounding properties of the proposed array are primarily forested areas. The project will be accessed by way of Sodeman Road. Currently, the main access for the parcel is at the recycling facility. However, there's an existing gate and existing culvert just south of that that would be proposed for the main access for the solar farm. From Sodeman Road to the fenced solar panels will be a gravel access road, and the total length of the access road is approximately 2,400 feet. At the end of the access road will be an emergency turnaround for vehicles to tow the other direction. The proposed project will result in the clearing of approximately three acres of forested areas and three acres of Russian sacking area. Also on site are federal jurisdictional wetlands. However, the proposed fenced area includes a 15-foot buffer from the edge of the wetlands to any proposed disturbances, including tree clearing. So as such, we are proposing no wetland disturbances and are coordinating with armed corps of engineers for a no permit required letter. Stormwater requirements have been reviewed and are proposed on the site. In accordance with the DEC Guidelines for Stormwater Requirements for a Solar Farm, treatment is only required for the areas of new impervious such as access road and equipment pads. As such, a series of vegetated squares, rock check dams, gravel, diaphragm, and plunge pool are proposed to meet those requirements. In addition to that, erosion control measures such as silk fence and erosion control matting are proposed. The interconnection for the generated electricity will be at Sodeman Road at the proposed six utility poles, which is standard for the National Grid interconnection. Primarily, the site will be, or the wires will be underground conduit from the poles to the array of panels, with the minor exception of an existing culvert where it will be brought above ground. Correspondence with ship has been completed, and we've received a letter of no effect. And I think that's about it for the presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions, and we thank you for your consideration of the project.
Okay. Frank, do you have anything you want to add, or?
Sure. So the project, I think most of you saw the last project we did. Very similar in size. I want to note that the variance we're going for is only, it's a 5% change we're looking for. The one thing Ryan noted is that we're coming above ground on the underground. It's not poles. We're, we have to go, there's a causeway that runs between the metal recycling facility and where our array begins, and in order to not impact the wetlands, we're going to bring it up on the side of the road of that causeway, just in rigid, so basically steel pipe, and that will be supported. So we're not adding any extra poles. I just want to make a clarification on that. And the other thing I always think about if I was sitting in your shoes is screened. So a lot of, few of the board members got a chance to go to the site on Saturday. If you go up Sodeman Road, one, the site has a fence with plastic slats in it, and you won't be able to see past that. The other thing is the topography of the land is such that there's a hill, then it drops down, and then we kind of come back up, and you really can't see to the back of the site. So, and again, this is the former Gadd Brothers Junkyard. So it's now Metro Metals Recycling. Charlie Van Hall owns it. The official name's AMC Realty. So beyond that, I think we've tried to do everything we can to mitigate any visual impact. It's kind of buried in the back. The other thing I think you want to think about is the fact that Mr. Van Hall has a permit to do a full-scale metal recycling on this. One of his wishes is to kind of be a good neighbor, and he thinks this is a good use for his property. It's obviously going to get him some revenue where he doesn't have to go full-on metal recycling facility. So I think as you look at things that could be here, this is probably one of the less offensive things to go in, and I'm hoping from the experience you had the first time around with us, realize it's a pretty quiet operation. You know, the construction period is relatively brief. Our hope is to get this thing moving as soon as we have permits, let's say late November, and we would be done, at least with the construction period, by March. So most of that stuff is happening in the winter, and we're out of the air, and then, of course, we've got a road rash. So that was the hardest part of the last night. So that's it. Have to talk through any questions anybody may have.
So I'll just say, when we did the tour on Saturday, we did go up to the highest point that the arrays will be at, and at least from where we were standing, it was impossible to see the road or any other house. There are two or three houses in the rough proximity, but none of them see beyond that fence.
Yeah.
And to see some things that are there. I don't know if you ever remember, even with the fencing that was there, that pretty much screened all the, literally hundreds, if not thousands, of vehicles that were out in those fields that have all been picked up, scrapped, and moved. I mean, it's amazing seeing how much cleaner the site is right now. There will be some tree removals, but you really won't even see those from the road because the trees that are remaining on the backside of the active metal recycling place are going to stay there. They're mostly pines that I could tell.
I can speak here because we're not Zooming.
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, there is a tree line here. So you know, here's the Sodeman Road. The peak of Sodeman is right about here. You know, you're going to still see this hill here, the topography is such that you have a National Grids, and then this actually is here, the hill. It's kind of drops down into the valley where the wetlands are, and you're still going to have an existing tree line here. So if we were over, this is where we were standing on Saturday, the top of the array is 11 feet, 16 feet.
Yeah.
You know, you really couldn't see anything. You could see the barns that are existing on the property for the metal recycling facility, but the house, I think there's three houses here, or two houses, that you really couldn't see them.
No, not at all.
Again, I think it's a preferred use as opposed to going full-on metal recycling on 40 acres.
And adjoining property owners to the north is Mr. Munter, who's had the experience with the other project.
Right.
And to the south is all the gals.
Right.
And then there's a cell tower. Is that on Mr. Munter's mansion?
Mr. Munter has a cell tower to the north. So, and then you've got a high voltage here, 230 volt lines here that are quite tall. So I don't think it's uncharitable to have something somewhat industrial in there.
So it is substantially invisible. You know, you'll rarely want to get a piece of glimpse of it. So that was, that was good to see. Does the board have any questions at this point?
What's the variance you're asking for from the zoning board?
I'm asking for an area variance. I believe 10% is the ground coverage ratio. We're at 15, 24. Yeah, I was correct, 15.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's about a 6% increase.
If you recall, we submitted a memo in, well, we did it last November, the previous town board, and in January is the new town board, to wanting to do an amendment to this solar law that's in our current code. It's effectively a special use permit, but not really in the special use permit section. The request at that point was to look at different area coverages because in the R2 zoning district, the maximum impervious surface coverage you can have is 10%. And that's not much on any one of these sites. So you know, if you look at it, this is a former auto salvage and junkyard. The other site was a former mining site. There could have been the potential, you didn't need a variance on the other one, but going slightly bigger, getting a more solar community benefit, but at the same time, you know, needing a variance. So we were going to suggest that that could also occur to us if we had multiple sites that might could combine. Let's say we had three vacant sites and you wanted to combine it. There were just ways that we thought we could write that law a little bit better to accommodate the solar while at the same time keeping the impervious surface down.
And another important note that I told the zoning board, we're committing to give the town $100,000 just as a community benefit for them to do what they want. I know I'm local there, so I know the town board is, or the town hall is in a bit of shambles. So we did, we had a great project last time. That's, I don't know where we have Sam Banks, and trying to get a little additional community benefit besides the taxes.
And there will be a payment in lieu of taxes negotiating this part of the deal, which that happened on the previous one, so it should happen fairly quickly for this one.
So I believe we're paying a full tax on, actually, we're paying full tax on the school, and we have a 15-year deal with the county and with the town.
Does it still go on the school as a pilot now?
So the school, we couldn't come to terms on a pilot agreement, so we was paid full tax on the school. So we were able to pay. So in essence, the town received more than they normally would.
Yeah.
Because they got a bigger share. The town typically gets a very small slice of taxes. The town was able to get a much bigger share than they would have by voting that law. So we have seen no reason to do it any other way this time.
Anybody else? John?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, we talked about the easement. Can you just help us understand either later or submit the paperwork that you can show that you have a clear easement from the current gate in? If you could just provide that to our attorney or, you know, explain?
Certainly.
Because I saw that there, maybe I misheard that we were talking at the site. There was some question about the easement.
I'm going to take you through this. This is, you know, we don't need an easement for this because it's, it's Charlie Van Hall's property. We'll need an easement across the National Grid right away. Well, not even right away. That's their property. That's P. I guess. Yeah. So we're working on that now. We have a package in the National Grid. They know it's coming. We don't expect any, any issues with that. It also would make a landlocked parcel if they didn't give it to us. So what's interesting is I don't believe Mr. Van Hall has even has an easement through there when we pulled title. So we're actually doing it for him and for, because his existing road comes in from the top here, and you're on site. So remember, we're, we're coming along the property line here. So we'll get both those in the minutes paper properly.
Yeah, I just was hoping that we could, you know, wrap that up in this project if we could.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
The other thing, I noticed just a small liner thing. I noticed the height of your fence. Can you review the height of your fence in relationship to the Town Code?
It's in Section 18027.
I just we dealt with this on the last one.
Six foot.
Six foot. And then, so NEC code says we have to be at least seven foot.
That's why I wanted to review because I remember this issue from the past.
Yeah.
But we have to, we have to make allowances for things.
Okay.
And if there has to be some sort of allowance, if you're already going to the zoning board, if the zoning official deems it necessary, I'll leave that at the review.
We'll talk. You can get ahold of me or.
Okay. Yeah.
Is the fence, is the fencing requirement cycling requirement or zone requirement?
It's a town regulation.
But where is it found?
It's in the zone.
Is it the cycling intersection?
No, it's in the zone.
It's in the zone.
So we cap our fences at six foot?
Trying to think how we handled that last one.
But the NEC code is...
Can you guys use some microphones?
Sorry, I'm sorry. The maximum is six foot, but the National Electrical Code is what it is?
Yeah.
So that's a conflict that we have. I don't know how that plays. I know under the banking laws, the lighting requirements trump the town zoning. I don't know about the NEC requirements. But that's something, I mean, it should be a simple enough variance.
It's the same issue as, as, that NEC trumps the...
That is why I didn't want to dictate anything. I wanted you to evaluate it and then work through what the, whatever correct is, we figure out what that is, and we agree that that's the, that's the direction.
I'll be working on that.
Okay.
Good catch, John.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
The previous project that we dealt with with your own...
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you fine, Steph.
So you had some decommissioning procedures that were part of the process
Yep.
at the prior project, and I would assume it's similar? Is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, it's a same decommissioning plan, same amount of money, same payment schedule. I think Mr. Whittle and I haggled back and forth, and we ended up paying that upfront, so we're happy to have it.
I just, I happen not to see that. I assume that, but thank you. That is in that portion.
That is the intention.
I figured you'd go with the same quote.
Yes. Once you have a template, you use it. Once you have a template, you use it. Anyone else?
So anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. So since we need to complete the coordinated review for search SECA, and we have the outstanding variance application for the Z B A, we'll need to let some procedural time lapse before we can further consider this application. I don't see the opportunity for us to substantively review the project until the Z B A completes its action on the variance, which won't be until October 22nd, if at the earliest. That said, on our October 21st meeting, we will have the project on our agenda and do our SECA due diligence and complete the Part Two, Identification of Potential Project Impacts, and Part Three, the Evaluation of Impacts and Determination of Significance. So it's done for the Z B A, who meets the following night, because they need that before they can make their decision. We could this evening, schedule the public hearing for November 18th to help get this project out before the public and get the notice out and get all that. And it can always be changed if for some reason we get delayed, but if everybody's inclined, I'd entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Southern Road Active Solar Special Use Permit and Site Plan Application for 7:05 PM on November 18th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions, anything on that? If not, Tina, call the board.
Mr. Marschano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes. Okay. So just again, quick highlight the schedule. We will next meet on October 21st, and this will, we'll have this on the agenda. Frank, you can come if you want, I don't think it's necessary. Well, if we're going to do the secret determination, somebody should be there. And we'll do that. The Z B A meets on October 22nd, at the earliest. They might act on it that evening, but we could still go ahead. If for some reason they act differently or don't act, we might have to postpone our hearing, but we'll have that scheduled for November 18th at 7:05 PM. And then we'll make our decision based on how that input goes. So that's that project. Is there any other business to be brought up for the planning board this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, Seaver Five, say aye.
Aye.
Your adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.